We will call this meeting of the Huntsville City Council to order. It is August 24th, 6 o'clock, and we welcome all those who have joined us here in the chambers to conduct the business of the city. We will begin our meeting with an invocation by Reverend Carol Tate from First Presbyterian Church, followed by the invocation led by Councilwoman Devon Keith. Please stand if you would like for the invocation. Let us pray. Eternal God, before whom the generations rise and fall, we give thanks for the gift of life, for life together now in this community, for life in our country. We pray that those who govern and those who rely on good governance will covenant in our life together that we will all do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with our God. In these days so fraught with irresponsible rhetoric, actions that undercut love of you and of our neighbor, fear that chokes our ability to talk with one another, we pray that this city will be that example of governance that seeks the common good. Help all of us to bring our true self, the best of our understanding of what it is to be truly human, not only to this meeting, but to every interchange with someone just like us, and to every interaction with someone who is very different from us. We pray this from the depth of goodness that our various faiths teach us, and from the fullest realization of how rich our life together in this city can truly be. Amen.
Resilience to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Tate, thank you Councilwoman Keith. Council members, you have received a copy of the meetings of the regular meeting held August 10th, 2017. Are there any changes or additions anyone wishes to make to the minutes? Hearing none, we will accept the minutes as presented to you. Item number four, A is resolutions and special recognitions to be presented by the mayor. The mayor has two special resolutions. Mayor Battle, the time is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask Bill Steiner to come up. Bill is part of our Cyber Huntsville group, and we have a big announcement of some great things that have happened in Huntsville through the Cyber Huntsville group, and I think we have a whole group of supporters who we would love to ask to come on up here.
Yeah, Mayor, as you know, hardly a week goes by around here without some sort of big, good announcement for Huntsville, and everybody probably heard this week about some monies coming from Montgomery for something called a Cyber Camp, and these folks were the impetus and the driving force behind that successful endeavor.
And this, let me, let me say to this group, thank you so much for your work. Deborah, for letting us use your home as a new home for Cyber Camp USA to match Space Camp, and Alicia, and all the team, and Pat, and everybody, thank y'all so much for all the work that y'all have done, because this is something that helps put us on the map. You know, eight years ago, when y'all, y'all were there, and we formed Cyber Huntsville, and we started out Cyber Huntsville. This past year, we have had the National Cyber Symposium, and we just had our first Cyber, Cyber Camp with 32 young campers coming in from all over the state of Alabama. And Alicia, you kind of put this together. Tell us a little bit about this.
I knew you were going to do that. So, in truth, this is really an idea that came from Mayor Battle, so I'd like to thank you for your leadership and everything that you've done for putting Cyber Huntsville together and giving us the ability to know how to help these children as we move forward. And on behalf of Cyber Huntsville and the Chamber and Deborah at the U.S. Space and Rocket Center, it is something that we dreamed up about a year ago, and we kind of worked through the Chamber, and we worked through Cyber Huntsville, and we worked through our industry partners to come up with a dream to help children learn about cyber. And then we found a phenomenal home, and we also found a partnership with UEH, and now we have a great program. Our next one is going to be in October, so we will have another 32 kids and hopefully six for the next year, correct?
And, you know, Deborah, this is your home that you're expanding to make the home, and you might want to tell about the gift that we got last week, too.
Well, the truth of the matter is that I wanted to do a Cyber Camp about five years ago, but I didn't know how. So, I'm very grateful to these people who came in and gave us the corporate knowledge and academic knowledge to actually do it, Mayor. And we had been working for a long time with people at the state about getting money to connect the two main buildings, the Davidson Center and the original building. And so, the two initiatives kind of conjoined at a good time, and Governor Ivey came and gave us $10 million of economic development money on Tuesday, which we'll parse out over time, to build a home for not only the Cyber Camp, but also for the engineering hardware for the space launch system. Todd May is going to provide that to us in the community, and we're going to make another huge building to put it in, which will also house Cyber Camp.
And UEH is going to help us out?
UEH is the curriculum partner for the U.S. Cyber Camp, so we are developing the curriculum that it's going to be different than a lot of other Cyber Camps. Huntsville is a town that makes a lot of things, a lot of systems, like rockets and helicopters, and so we're going to concentrate on cybersecurity education that defends those types of systems for, for our students. And we are very happy to be members of this partnership and really appreciate being here. Thank you.
Mike Ward was the one who got us down and put it into the state agenda and got us down to Montgomery. Pat helped us, Pat Sullivan helped us make the ask, and the ask became reality, and also he's been a helper with the whole cyber effort with Cyber Huntsville. So, to each of you, I want to say thank you for the work that y'all have done. You know, when we start looking at what we have done in the cyber world, we start coding in second grade, we start doing programming in middle school, high school, we're on cyber teams, and then in our two-year college systems are given certifications for cyber expertise, and then our four-year colleges have our master's program and our bachelor's program in, in cyber. So, when you look across the board, we're developing our own workforce for this multi-billion dollar industry that's out there. And so, to each of you, you are helping to make our whole North Alabama area that much stronger economically, and thank you for the work that y'all have done. Give them a big round. And Bill has certificates for, for four of you, and we have an extra one coming. Mike and Pat, y'all share, okay? You get yours in one week, and the other one gets the next week. Thank you so much. And Mike, you can just stay up here. If we can have Chip Cherry and Rose Allen come up from the Huntsville-Madison County Chamber of Commerce. There's big news for the Chamber of Commerce, because again, we're number one. And Chip, please tell us about being number one unless you want Rose to.
Well, I was very honored to be chair, but this is certainly a reflection of the Chamber and our whole community. It's, it's not one person or even one team. In fact, going through this whole Chamber of the Year process and evaluation and competition, the thing that really set us apart is that our success and our community is driven by the fact that we all come together. We were able to rise above all our differences, political or otherwise, and really do what's in the best interest of our community. So, to have the Chamber serve as the catalyst for that togetherness for our community is, is just a very special thing, and we're all very grateful to Chip and his team and the amazing job that they do behind the scenes for all of our success and our community in terms of making a contribution with the mayor and, and our other elected officials. But this is a great time to recognize them, to let them stand out on center stage, and thank the Chamber for all that they've done, so we're very proud of you.
And, and for those of you who don't know, this is, this resolution is a resolution to say congratulations to our Huntsville Area Chamber of Commerce, Huntsville-Madison County Area Chamber of Commerce, who went into this year, they, they applied into a pool and they, and were looked at by their peers from throughout the nation and chosen to be the number one Chamber of Commerce in the United States, and that is a great honor. Congratulations so much. Thank y'all so much.
Congratulations to all those who have been honored, but we need to make that resolution official. The resolution commending the Huntsville-Madison County Chamber of Commerce for its recognition as the 2017 Chamber of the Year by the Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives.
I move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr., by Mr. Culver. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations again. Item 4B2 is a resolution for adoption only, a resolution celebrating Oakwood University Church on their 40th anniversary at the same location.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Russell. Mr. Culver, is there anything you would like to say about this?
Sorry, Ms. Reed. I'm excited and looking forward to presenting this resolution on behalf of the council and the mayor to Oakwood University Church on their 40th anniversary at that same location. That is amazing, so thank you.
Wonderful. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries. We do have a number of announcements. First of all, we would like to ex- Oh, B. Okay, that must have been a late addition. Item 4B2, 4B2B is a resolution celebrating the 5th Annual Black Tie Adult Prom hosted by Wiley L. Day Jr. and sponsored by Day Capital, Inc., and a New Day Foundation to be held September 9, 2017 at the Von Braun Center.
Motion to approve.
Second by the Chair. Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Likewise, I'm excited and looking forward to the celebration of the 5th Annual Black Tie Adult Prom that's hosted by Wiley Day Jr. and sponsored by Day Capital, Inc., and a new foundation, a New Day Foundation. This will be held September the 9th, 2017 at the Von Braun Civic Center. I've had the pleasure of being there for the last four years, so this will be the 5th year, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries. Are there any other special recognitions? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements, and we do have a number. First, we will excuse Councilman Bill Kling. He told me this is only the third meeting he has missed in recent memory, so we will miss him tonight. Also, item 15B has been deleted. We also have an item on the agenda, item 15AF, which is an ordinance for bond issuance that the administration has asked to consider tonight. It will require unanimous consent for consideration at this meeting. We've also been asked to consider this matter out of order earlier in the agenda since the winning bidders for these warrants are in New York, an hour ahead, and need to know the sale has been approved. So, I would propose that we address this matter now, unless anyone has an objection. The Chair moves for consideration of item 15AF by unanimous consent at this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. We will take a roll call vote. Mr. Keith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russell? Mr. Culver?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Unanimous consent having been provided to consider item 15AF at this time, we will move on. 15AF is an ordinance authorizing issuance of the city's general obligation refunding warrants, Series 2017D, and general obligation refunding school warrants, Series 2017E. Do I hear a motion to approve this item?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver.
Madam President, could we get an explanation, please?
Certainly. Ms. Sargent.
Yes, the city of Huntsville went to market today to refund, as noted, general obligation warrants for both the city and the school systems. This was purely a refunding. There was no extension to the life of these bonds, and there was no new money borrowed. The total amount of refunding or money saved was approximately $5.5 million, and that was about 8.5% for both series of debt. We refunded approximately six, just under $65 million during this process, split between the two obligations.
We also have Phil Dotz and Josh McCoy here, if you have any other questions for them. I think the, the most important thing to note is this is not new debt. It's refinancing existing debt. It will not add to our debt, but it will in fact save the city 5.1.
5.5, it will save the city $5.5 million.
Always a good thing.
Very much.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Another announcement. A month or so ago, we approved a new procedure to appoint municipal judges and also approved an additional full-time judge position. We held interviews in the past two days. We had 26 applicants. We interviewed nine of those applicants, and I, I must say, what really impressed with the caliber of folks who were interested in serving that position and grateful to them for offering themselves for public service. We will hold a special session this Monday, August 28th, at 3:00 PM, to nominate and select two municipal judges here in these council chambers, and that is open to the public. And finally, we have that exciting time of year coming up when we start to look at the budget. Mr. Hamilton, would you please run through that timeline for us?
Yes, Madam President, for the, for the public, we are in the process now of building the budget, and we're obviously deep into that process, because we've got a, we, we expect to have a budget passed prior to 1 October, if at all possible, and so far it's going very well. I think we're comfortable that we'll be able to present to you a, a good balanced budget that meets the basic needs of the city. It's never as large as you're going to want it to be, and you'll see the details of that, but it's certainly one that we think continues to meet the, the needs of the city. We expect to introduce that budget ordinance to you at the regularly scheduled meeting on September 14th. Then, council will call a work session on September 18th. Make note that that is a Monday. It's obviously not normal for work sessions to occur on Monday, but because of some scheduling conflicts during that week, it forces the work session to occur on Monday evening, September 18th. The work session is where we will do a detailed explanation and go through the entire, go through the entire budget and handle any questions and things that you have. And then, we would request that council consider and vote for the budget on September 28th, and that would leave sufficient time then to have it loaded and ready to go on 1 October. So, just to reiterate, introduction on September 14th, work session on September 18th, and then consider for, for vote by council on September 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Hamilton? Moving on, we have no business with outside legal representation. That brings us to item 6, public hearings. 6A1 is a public, now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Dr. Robinson, counsel. This resolution identifies 29 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. 27 of the properties are owned by local owners, and six are owned by out-of-state owners. All 29 owners received written notification of their notices by first-class mail that they were in violation of our ordinance, and they were given 14 days to correct the violations. All 29 failed to respond, so we cut their properties, and we're asking for your approval to assess the cost of that cutting per each property tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this, on this item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion or questions for Ms. Jordan? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Many opposed? Motion carries. Item 6A2 is a public hearing to hear and consider all objections or protests, if any, to the proposed removal of a nuisance at 812 Ryson Avenue Northeast, Huntsville, Alabama. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Dr. Robinson, you're looking at pictures of 812 Ryson Avenue Northeast that were taken this afternoon. We'll be asking for your authorization to abate the nuisance at this location during the next item on your agenda. You can see, if you turn your head a little on this picture, what remains on the property. The property owners did make tremendous strides in removing the majority of the public nuisance. There is still some debris on the property, and we would like to have your approval in the next item to go on private property and remove it.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed, and we should note that this was simply a public hearing. This was, the resolution follows. 6A3 is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at 812 Ryson Avenue Northeast, Huntsville, Alabama.
I move approval of the resolution.
Second by the Chair. Is there any discussion by the members of council? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A4 is a public, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-486, amending the city of Huntsville air pollution control rules and regulations. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Thank you.
We will have a presentation from Natural Resources. Mr. Cardno.
Thank you. The proposed amendments to the city's air pollution control rules will provide updates and reflect changes to federal and state regulations since the last time the city's rules were amended. The proposed changes include updating the definition of all organic compounds in Chapter 1, modifying the public notice requirements for various types of permitting actions in Chapter 3, changes to the requirements for incineration of commercial and industrial solid waste in Chapter 5, incorporation of additional federal new source performance standards and natural emission standards for hazardous air pollutants in Chapters 13 and 14, and amending Chapter 18 to incorporate changes to the control of municipal solid waste landfill gas emissions. We have sent out letters to permitted facilities advising them of the changes, and we have not received any comments. In addition, the Air Pollution Control Board has recommended that the council adopt the proposed changes.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on the proposed changes to these regulations? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Are there any questions for Mr. Cardno? Or any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Many opposed? Motion carries. 6A5, thank you, Mr. Cardno. 6A5, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-488, rezoning 24.35 acres of property lying on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of Hazland Road from Residence 1A District to Residence 2 District. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting. I suspect there are a few people who want to comment on this. Would you please make your comments at this time? The public hearing is open.
Madam President, Ms. Nichols probably needs to explain it first.
Ms. Nichols.
This rezoning request began in May 2017. This property is currently zoned Residence 1A, which is the original zoning designation for this property. The proposed developer and recent property owner of this particular area would like to add on to this property. This will be a part of the Jackson's Bend addition, which we saw a portion of this last month, the piece that was located to the west of this property that's highlighted now in yellow. This property was newly annexed property that had no previous zoning designation. It has since been zoned Residence 2 with applicable plat restrictions. The property owner has requested that the highlighted property bordered in red that is currently 1A be rezoned to Residence 2 with those same plat restrictions. Both pieces of these properties will make up the entire Jackson Bend new addition.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nichols. Now, is there anyone who wishes to comment? Ms. O'Halloran, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth O'Halloran, and I live at 2400 Rothmore, and my home abuts behind this proposed rezoning, and it is the Jackson Bend and the Whitesburg Estates associations that wish us to tell you that we do not wish to be rezoned, this area, to R2, even with restrictions from our, from 1A. This development would change the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood. That is the first objection that we have. And our second objection is because in developing these communities, you need to create water retention ponds. Now, these water retention ponds are sold to the prospective buyers as these nice little amenities that they get. It is not explained to these homeowners that they are now part of the city's plan to mitigate flood, and these homeowners have no idea how to take care of these great big ponds. Either the cost or the future cost is told them that there are just nice, pretty-looking ponds. In this particular area, there are going to be two large lakes, and in doing this, when the city council allows this development, number one, the developer assumes no responsibility. He does not have any responsibility for the future homeowners, and we asked Mr. Enfinger what he was going to do to help inform prospective buyers about this, because it happened to us, and it happened to Tamra, and he said that was not his problem, that he was just the developer. So, it's not the developer's problem. It's not the builder's problem. It's not the city council's problem. However, it is our problem, and we would just like to know what you are going to do about it. Another thing is that we feel that there has to be a better way of notifying communities. You've already told us that you're aware that this is a problem. Before you allowed this developer to go this far, you should have really had the community involved, because we were told that he, you couldn't have him change these plans because he met requirements of which we did not know anything about. So, that was also an issue that we had. So, we do have a problem with not being informed about this. So, we just wanted to make sure the council knew that this practice of developing land using water mitigation ponds is not a good thing, because there's no way of informing future homeowners on what to do, as we are now well aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Halloran. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter?
Hello, Susan Layton, 2002, Danbury Circle. I'm here with the Whitesburg Estates Civic Association, and our only, at this point, I mean, they've already broken ground on this, so we know where this is headed, but we have one question, and we'd like it answered. At the last city council meeting, when the west end of that was zoned as Zone 2, R2, we were told at that meeting several times, this is not spot zoning. I would like the city council to explain to me why this is not spot zoning. Let me explain. I live right next, I live on Danbury Circle, right next to the part you're considering for rezoning tonight. I live in the very corner. Across the ditch from me, you'll see that there is some R2A property. That was zoned R2A when Mr. Hayes was going to develop a multipurpose, a multi, multi-resident apartment complex, some single home, single-family homes, and put in a city park down where you see the other yellow area. But that's never going to happen. All of that strip of property, the R2A, is currently occupied by the Grissom Sportsfields, so they're never going to build apartment complexes there or anything else. So, that's the land that's adjacent to it that is being considered as R2A. The only other R2A in our neighborhood is near the Parkway and over by Meadowbrook, those two areas. So, I just want an answer why this is not considered spot zoning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Mr. Preak.
I'm Clay Preak. I live at 2323 Rothmore Drive. First, I want to apologize to the city council for my tone and delivery of my comments at the last city council meeting. I care a lot about my city and my neighborhood. As Council Robbins can attest, my wife and I volunteer a lot for our community at nearly every volunteering event there is, either it's through our wire or our church, because we do care about our community. I was born in Huntsville Hospital, started school at East Clinton, and graduated Johnson Jaguars. So, I care about my home. So, of course, originally when I was told I wouldn't be able to present, I got a little agitated because I'm passionate and care about my home. It was good reasoning why I was, for, for that call to be made. So, again, I surely want to apologize for that. I do want to thank the city council for providing the city representatives at the last meeting, especially Mr. Shane Davis. He stayed and answered everyone's questions, and he was very polite and very professional. So, I do want to thank you. However, I do want to express a few things, and, for, for this. First and foremost, you know, people look and they say, you know, the city council, they're the leaders of the community and all that. First and foremost, I hope you realize that you're first representatives of those communities that elected you to your office, and you're a collective leadership to take care of the city and take care of our community. All right? Personally, I hope you consider yourselves public servants first, as you do, just like the, the great men and women that we have in the Huntsville Police and Fire Departments and, and the women and men who serve in HEMC, because their first goal at every day that they do their job- their job is nothing but to protect us as a community. And so, I do hope that you see yourselves in that way. Secondly, I want you to know that everyone in my community researched, read, and did nothing but state the facts, because we're concerned about our neighborhood. During this whole ordeal, we were twice accused of being, were called trespassers, even when we had the property owner's permission and were given a key. And this whole ordeal is just, the bottom line is, and I know because we've discussed it, because a lot of us walk in our neighborhood in the evenings on the streets, because we don't have sidewalks, and we feel that the city council put the net profit of the developer before the concerns of the community. And that's just, that's just the simple facts of it. That's how, that's how we feel, and I'm sure my neighbors agree, because there's no other reason for the decisions to be made. And to the point of the water mitigation plan, I hope that soon the city council will let us know when the city will start attending the homeowners associations who do have these retention ponds or lakes, whatever developers want to call them, to provide guidance on how to care for them and what their plan is to take care of them, considering it is part of the city's water mitigation plan. And last but not least, Mr. Effinger, several times has stated that he's willing to work with us and that he doesn't want us upset with him. So, I hope in the last couple of days, while the recent dust is coming through the community, that he would at least provide us free car wash coupons to take care of some of our vehicles. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preak.
My name is Carmen Covey. I live at twenty-three twenty-four Rothmore. I'm not going to argue against R two. I know it's an effort and futility. But I would like to, on the record, request that Mr. Enfinger provide Jackson's Bend Homeowners Association with a recorded deed with easement access to our west property. He has stated that he would do that in the future sometime. We just want to make sure it gets taken care of before he is no longer the property owner. And going to the retention ponds, I would just like to state that Jackson's Bend has no amenities. We have no clubhouse. We have no pool. We have retention ponds and surrounding wetlands and areas. And for that, we spend about ten thousand dollars a year to take care of that. And that is part, to me, that's part of the city's responsibility, even though it's private property. I'm sure we'd probably be more than willing to give that property back to the city, because we can't do anything with it, but we're required to maintain it. We have to mow it. We have to keep the ponds clear of debris. And from what I've read on the internet, we should, every ten to fifteen years, retention ponds have to be dredged, and that could cost thousands of dollars. We have thirty-five homes in our homeowners association. If we have to spend thousands of dollars to get these ponds that are part of the floodwater mitigation dredged, I don't know how we're, I don't know how we're going to do it. So.
Thank you, Ms. Covey. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Mr. Day, oh, yes, sir.
My name is Jim Cape. I live at twenty-four oh five Rothmore. I wasn't a part of the meetings that got R two in, or I don't understand necessarily why. That's a exercise in futility to rise in opposition to that, but that's what I'm here to say. I don't like the change in character of the neighborhood as a result of that. I don't like the fact that it's being compared to the fields at the new high school as a reason for, make a similar zoning. And I don't like the fact that the zone, the land to the left in yellow there was zoned first and then used as a, as a sort of a template apparently for why the green zone outlined in red there would also be zoned that way. It just seems to be a little bit disingenuous. Notice, as has been said, was perhaps us asleep at the wheel, but I think the city really ought to be doing something more when the change of your neighborhood is going to be made like that. You know, our biggest investment is our house, right? We care a lot about it. And when we find out after it's too late to do anything about it, that that investment is met, is substantially changed, we're going to be, going to be impacted negatively, maybe a lot of additional traffic or something. It just doesn't sit well with us. So, I'd like to concur with all the salient points that were brought up by the others and just say I'm, I'm hoping there's still not, it's not a done deal and that the profit of the developer is not put before the rest of us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment?
I'm Kathy Preak. I live at twenty-three twenty-three Rothmore Drive, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to express my opinion. When we bought our home, we did verify that we were R one A and that the adjoining property was R one A. And I'm just saying, the city really needs to look at the practice of rezoning downgrades, because it's not fair to current homeowners. And I know Councilman Russell, you expressed that. I believe you understand how we feel with that. So, that, it really isn't fair. And I understand, too, that there are going to be plat restrictions on this area. But look, when you pull the maps up, that are pulled up in the planning meetings, city council meetings, it's not going to say R two, PS, there's special plat restrictions, by the way. It's just going to show R two. I mean, people, when they go and they dig further, can see that there's special plat restrictions, but it will never show up on those maps. And also, every time we've come to planning meetings and city council, when you pull the maps up, the R two A that's not even part of our neighborhood, that's separated by the blue line ditch, keeps being thrown into it as a reason to rezone us to R two A. I just think that needs to really be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Mr. Davis, would you like to come and address some questions that have been raised, particularly with regard to the plat restrictions, the R two zoning, its impact on aesthetics and the rezoning downgrades, the issue with regarding water retention ponds and lakes, spot zoning, impact on property values?
Madam President, be happy to. First, let me address the zoning and the spot zoning issue. So, the map that's up on the screen for this proposed development of property had two options, the current R one A or the R two, because it's contiguous to both of those zones. The property owner requested the R two A zone. The first zoning piece that the council considered last meeting was a piece of newly annexed property. You know, by law, then, as quickly as possible, you must bring before you recommended zoning through Planning Commission and the city council. So, I don't think the planning staff or city staff was trying to do any switcheroo. It was just the process due to the annexation approval of, that's the next piece that must go through with annexation, is to get a piece of property zoned. As far as the retention facilities, we will continue to assist, as we have in the past, Jackson Bend Homeowners Association, as we do all HOAs throughout the city. I think we've got a top-notch drainage department and engineering and a phenomenal public works department that assists HOAs every day. There's still some work we want to assist Jackson Bend community with, and we'll be doing that. Ms. Kathy Martin is, Marty Calvert's continuing those conversations. I know there's some work that we've agreed to do to offset some costs, so that that cost is not burdened on the HOA. And that relationship will continue. That relationship has existed for my entire seventeen-year career with all HOAs, no matter where they're at in the city of Huntsville. I mean, that's part of the service to our taxpayers. And that will never change. Then the Hazeland Road extension, I've had great conversations with several residents. I appreciate the comments that were made about the working relationship. That will not change, so long as I'm part of urban development and the departments that follow under my, my command. And as we continue to build out Hazeland Road and make those connectivities, we will guarantee that all residents through there have a say in that connectivity, both from a pedestrian standpoint and a vehicular standpoint. We want it to be a great place to live. I think we have no choice to make it a great place to live. Our city depends on it, because if not, property taxes and retail taxes is what we live on. It's what we pass a budget when we present to you in a couple of weeks. So, you know, we've got the same focus point as a homeowner, is to make sure we maintain property values, and we'll do everything we can to be a partner. And if I've missed one of those questions, Madam President, please let me know.
I think you covered most of them. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Any follow-up questions on that? Ms. O'Halloran, come to the microphone.
Yes, thank you. I get as when I get agitated and I can't talk, so I try not to get worked up. But the problem is, is that the future homeowners, just like us, have, who is going to protect them, as we were not protected. We had no idea what joining this homeowner association was. We had no idea that these weren't just pretty ponds, that they must be cared for, maintained, would cost a lot of money. Now, the city, I've been told that we had buyer's regret. Now, let me just explain what buyer's regret is. I drive down the Parkway and I see Talbots, and there's a pretty green sweater in there, and it's like two hundred and fifty dollars on a size zero mannequin. And I go in and I buy it. And I get home and I put it on a five foot eleven, one hundred and sixty-five pound frame. And I go, hmm, that's buyer's regret. Now, buyer's regret is not, I go to a community and I buy a home, and I'm told that you will have an HOA fee, and it will be X amount. And then you find out later that you're part of a water mitigation plan. And the cost will go up. And they have no idea what it is. And I appreciate that the city is going to help us. But until we have to go after it, and we have no idea in the future what it's going to be, I object to the city allowing this practice. I think it's the wrong thing to do, because going forward, you don't know what it's going to cost, let alone how can the homeowners know? So, there's no way to make informed consent on something that you don't know and can't say. So, you're basically doing something after the fact. Now, I like to say that the city council might not have realized this was a problem, but you now know. And so, I just want to know, what are you going to do going forward to protect the homeowners who are not going to be informed at the time that they purchase their homes? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Halloran. Ms. Reed, would you like to comment? Ms. Reed.
I live in everybody's neighborhood. I'm Jackie Reed, three oh three, Jack Coleman Drive. When I see a lot of people come down here, and it's brought, we've been to the zoning variance and the planning commission, and it brought in here, and I see them begging and talking to you. Has the developer gave them a master plan as to what he's going to do if you annex and change your zoning on this? Has he laid the facts out there for the public to see what he's going to do? And you tell them what you're going to do. Because I hear every day in this city, they won't return my phone calls. I'm tired of hearing that. I'm here working for the public and the people, and I don't care if they like me or don't like me. But if he don't have a master plan, the developer, to lay it up there to what he's going to do with this and you annex this and tell them, come in here and do all this stuff, you're not doing your homework. All I'm saying is, start doing your part and helping these neighbors. That's who we're supposed to be working for. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And there is a plan, and we've all seen it. In fact, the neighbors have made comments on it. And the developer changed some things on that plan as a result of those comments. Mr. Davis?
Dr. Robson, I was going to make that exact point. It was not required for the developer to submit that, to request zoning. It's not a requirement. Many times you approve a zoning for certain areas of the city, that the planning department will tell you what the proposed use is, but not in detail of its current layout. But for this particular instance, we actually asked for a full set of design plans, both for retention ponds, road layouts, lot layouts, so it's ready for construction before we would even consider bringing any type of zoning request to the planning commission and ultimately to the city council. And just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Ms. Covey?
I'm on retention ponds again. I was the treasurer of Jackson's Bend Homeowners Association for seven years, and I was the president for one year. So, I know what goes on there. And when I said we spend ten thousand dollars a year to take care of our ponds, we're doing the work. We're buying the chemicals and we're putting the chemicals in the pond and everything. We have hired somebody to actually do the bush hogging and the mowing of the surrounding area, but we're taking care of the ponds. We actually looked into hiring a firm to take care of the ponds for us. And that would have cost us about fifteen thousand dollars a year for thirty-five homes. And that's in addition to the ten thousand we're already spending. So, the, if you get a bunch of homeowners in there who don't want to take care of yards, they're definitely not going to want to take care of ponds. And can you see them spending fifteen thousand dollars a year to take care of those two retention ponds? Do you know what their HOA dues are going to be and how that's going to affect those home values? So, I like, yeah, I agree with Liz. You need to look at this practice of putting, making homeowners responsible for these types of water bodies.
Thank you. I think, I think we've, we've heard a lot about the retention ponds. We've given some good input there. Again, this is regarding the R two zoning, but thank you for that input. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment with regard to the R two zoning?
To, to R two zoning, Clay Preak, twenty-three twenty-three Rothmore, to the R two zoning, yes. Mr. Effinger probably did provide plans and all that, and everybody stated. But his plans are not the way that community is. And those homes will not be built the same. They won't look the same. We're all grown adults. We picked our neighborhood. I knew, I knew where I wanted to live. I knew the type of neighborhood I wanted to go into. And that's what I did. I knew I wanted my son to go to Grissom High. They can't play football for a lick, but at the end of the year, when it came to scholarships, they got them. The only guys I know were, Donnie Humphrey, bless his soul, you know, the guys that could play ball actually got places. So, I picked my community. I know what I wanted it like. That development is not what our community is, and we won't become accustomed to it, because it's not going to change. Those short driveways for that plat restriction doesn't. Again, the city representative said, it didn't matter whether it was Zone Two or One A. It doesn't matter. So, the only reason, and the only thing that we could think of, because it wasn't presented by the developer, is it's all about his net profit. And that's what it is. There can't be anybody said any different. And for the city to say that they'll work with us, I hope they'll work with us in getting us back our fifteen thousand dollars that we went on the city to do the project, which was a repair project to a failed water plant. And so, the R two and those short plots, with restrictions or not, are not the way our neighborhood is. They're older homes with bigger lots. We don't have the short high driveways. And again, it's, it's all about the profit, because it could have been One A, and the developer even stated that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And the public, yes, Ms. O'Halloran?
Tanya Coward. I live at twenty-three twenty-two Rothmore Drive. And one of those retention ponds is actually going to be behind my house. So, I'm at the mercy of whoever the homeowners association is. I don't have a problem with somebody wanting to develop, but just like my neighbors, I did the research. One A, no problem. Bought my house. Now you want to rezone it. But you don't seem to think that's, some of you don't seem to think that's an issue. I think it's an issue. I, I'm going to have a pond behind my house. Some of you may think that's wonderful. That's lovely. It's lovely if it's maintained. It's lovely if the people that are going to be living there have the funds to maintain it. If they don't have the funds to maintain it, where does that leave me when I want to sell my house, when there's a pond that is overgrown, that they're not taking care of? Where does it leave me if they're not maintaining it? Where does it leave my property in terms of the water mitigation? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to comment on R two zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve? To approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Culver?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Discussion, Mr. Davis. Some, I think one of the things that, that this discussion has brought to light is, and we have plat restrictions on there. I believe those plat restrictions will hold. They are for single family. They are for, simply for the setbacks. Is it possible to, in, I'm just thinking in terms of the future, this raises an issue. Is there zoning that, that just is for multifamily homes? Because again, people looking at this are not going to see those plat restrictions on there, and it will look like multifamily property.
You know, it's very good.
Do we have granularity in our zoning to that extent?
And it's a very good question. I think you've got to be really, really careful. Spot zoning in Alabama is illegal. So, if we had a zone that the planning department went created that said, "You must be in this zone to have multifamily. If you're not in this zone, it doesn't apply." It's hard to create a character community, you know, whether it's South Huntsville, North Huntsville, Southeast Huntsville, West Huntsville. You know, what makes a great community is a blend of livability options, blend of shopping options, blend of work options. So, that's why our zoning has, you know, some limited single family, but then as you move along, it allows you to have mixed use for, for some, you know, lack of a better term. This certainly doesn't allow mixed use, but, but I think to have a great community, you've got to have some of all of it. So, to have a zone created that said, you know, it was RM2, and it's only for multifamily. And then we started trying to plop that down, and we had no multifamily zone that was contiguous to. I think we could be on a slippery slope of creating a spot zoning situation, which we'd be in violation of state law.
Now, spot zoning has been brought up as an issue here, and it is your belief that this does not violate the spot zoning law?
It is not spot zoning.
And you're very cognizant of that law.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We take that very seriously.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just a quick question, Madam President, and defer a large amount as this is your district. Shane, a quick question, what she said last, and I guess as I'm sitting here, just thinking about R2. When it comes to those retention ponds, if it does get to a point where, you know, they say they call community development or engineering, and we come out there and review it, we will act upon it, correct?
Absolutely. And, and, you know, for the city to maintain common area of ponds, I know of no city in America that does that. There gets to be a lot of finger pointing. I think you look across America, whether it's commercial, whether it's industrial. You know, our subdivision regulation from 1992 stated that. Most HOAs maintain those. And HOAs maintain those at a, at a, at different levels, quality levels. Some, some use those as open green space that they congregate, maybe have picnics or walking trails. Others just want to make sure that it functions. So, so there are different levels of maintenance, which cost or associate with that, different levels of maintenance. But irregardless, the city is our taxpayer, and, and if our phone rings, we're going to help irregardless. I mean, that's, that's what we get paid to do, and that's what people pay their taxes for. Thank you.
We have HOAs and we have retention ponds all over town, and, but they're functioning. Is that right?
I've been here 17 years, and I have not seen, and we got thousands and pond thousands of subdivisions. I don't know of a case to where we've been called that says, okay, this is silted in and not working. Where you will get us a pond, or whether it be a dry pond or a wet pond, that you will have to do that heavy maintenance, is typically you'll see where a subdivision, let's say you had 100 lot subdivision, and the subdivision gets put on the ground, we CO it, they start building houses, they get 20, 30 houses built, maybe a recession comes in. Something happens that changes the characteristics, and those lot cells start slowing down. You have a lot of bare lots. Well, that runoff starts bringing sand and mud and dirt into that pond, starts filling it up. When you have a case like Jackson's been, Huntsburg Estates, where it is a desired place to live, and the lots get built on very, very quickly, and people establish yards, you typically don't have that siltation problem to where you're, you know, having to dredge out ponds. It really depends on how quick the subdivision gets built out and developed.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor, please indicate. Are there any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Please note, Mr. Russell votes against. Motion carries. We will move on to 6A6. Now is time and place for public hearing on ordinance number 17-490. Rezoning 1.31 acres of property lying on the east side of First Street and on the south side of Freeman Road from Heavy Industry District to Village Business C6 District. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This rezoning request is approximately 1.31 acres. It's currently zoned Heavy Industry, which is the original zoning designation of this area. The current property owner would like to request that this property be rezoned from Heavy Industry to Village Business C6 District. They would like to propose a small multifamily development on this property, and they would like to make use of some of the design and density controls that C6 accommodates, and C6 does legally permit multifamily dwellings.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Keith. Mr. Culver, are you leaving us for the evening? Okay. Just checking for a call. Are there any comments, discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A7. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-492. Zoning 2.63 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Governor's West and north of Interstate 565 to Commercial Industrial Park District, set July 13th, 2017, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This zoning request is for newly annexed property. This property was annexed back in May 2017. This property is approximately 2.63 acres. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Commercial Industrial Park, which will accommodate the proposed commercial use that will locate on this property.
Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none. The public hearing is closed.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Any discussions or questions for Ms. Nichols? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A8 is a public hea, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-494. Zoning 96.20 acres of newly annexed property lying on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Paul Drive to Residence 2A District. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This zoning request is also newly annexed property. It's approximately 96.20 acres. There is currently a single-family detached home, which will be removed from this property, and this property will be used for proposed single-family detached subdivision, and it does not have any plat restrictions that will be applied.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone who wishes to comment? Public hearing is closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion, council members? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time and place for public hearing on ordinance number 17-496. Zoning 2.06 acres of newly annexed property lying south of Hobbs Island Road and south of Railway Lane to Residence 2A District. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is also newly annexed land. This property is approximately 2.06 acres. This property will join the adjacent proposed Riverside at Butler Basin subdivision, which is zoned Residence 2A. So, planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Residence 2A so that the lots are all consistent.
Is there anyone who wishes to comment regarding this item? Is there anyone wishing to comment? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our public hearings. We have no public hearings to be set. That brings us to item seven, communications from the public. We have a list of individuals who have signed up to speak when I call your name. Please come to the microphone. You will have three minutes to address the council. First on the list is Army Daniel Jr. Subject is problem. Mr. Daniel, are you present? He's not present. Thank you. The next person on the list is Howard Ross. Subject is HPD accident report. Mr. Ross, are you present? Mr. Ross is not present. The next person on the list is Thomas Piff. Subject is Big Spring Park. Mr. Piff, please come to the microphone.
Thomas Piff, 11314 Del Chris Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. I've corresponded with the council folk, councilmen and councilwomen regarding Big Spring Park. I'm imploring you to expand Big Spring Park with the very ground that we're standing on. This opportunity to do so is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it's vital for us to meet the needs of our growing population with our central park.
Mr. Pivot, it appears that our light is out, so we're going to be, if you'll just watch up here.
I'm not going to go very long. I just, I would implore you to go out and survey and poll your constituents and ask them what they want to do with this property. Back after the bank building was built, it's a rather private building that really never met any of the promises that they made. I think that we need to find the highest use for this property for all Huntsvilleans, not for the developers, not for profiteering. They, we can go eat elsewhere. We can have fun elsewhere, but the park belongs to all of us. And this is, I think they're contemplating an outright sale to an individual developer. It's not even being competed for. If y'all are the custodians of our public trust and our interest, then we should compete, should have the developers compete for this resource. But I really believe it belongs to all of us and should remain with all of us. It's like these people that were here today about done deals. Everything's a done deal before we hear about it. And if you, if you care about your city and love your city, I don't think you need to have another coffee shop that closes at 5:00, another bank that doesn't have, that's basically a private building that displaces what belongs to all of us. This spring, and this park is a symbol of community and life, and I will be happy to meet with y'all and tell you more about the developer that I know and the special considerations the developer that has considered for this job has gotten in the past. I think, and if we're going to run for governor, I think you want to worry about the people first, too. So, that's, I don't know. I didn't come here with a plan to talk, but I believe if y'all ask the people that you serve what they want here, I think that they can go over to that other subject, that other development, get their dinner, and then come to their park. They don't have to have everything here. Please think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Piff. Mr. Battle, would you like, Mayor Battle, would you like to comment?
Sure. Mr. Piff, I think your, your idea is exactly right. And we asked, when we had the master planners come in and do the downtown plan, UDA, who did the downtown plan, who is a very well-respected, well-respected firm, we looked at that, both options. We looked at the idea of taking this property and taking it from Fountain Circle all the way down to the park and leaving it open as park. There's about a 30-foot fall in the area when you go from the street all the way down to the end of the park. UDA, when, after looking at it, said, "Your much better use in here is to give you an urban feel, an urban use on this, to give you a building that would be iconic, one that would be, I think you would have to say, one that would be timeless and one that would, would go with the neighborhood year after year after year." But also to give you a reason to come to the park, a reason to stop by and to shop at this shop, or maybe stop by and get a, get something to drink at the fountain, or do something here. And, and we talked to them a long time about the idea, the idea of a park versus actually having a development here. And they were very strong on their push, and they were very strong in saying, "You need reasons to come here." Some of the reasons that you already have this park here is that you have reasons to come here. You have a museum of art. You have a coffee shop. You have a pizza place, and that's some of the reasons to come here. Eventually, we will have city center, which will be reasons to come here. But that gives you a reason to come over to the other part of the park. They said this section of the park needs to have, needs to have something that is an attraction to bringing people here. He said, "You will have a very busy park, a very active park," which we're starting to have now. As we've done the redevelopment of Big Spring Park and Big Spring Park West, we've had a very active redevelopment. We have active, activity down here day and night, and you see people walking. But the, the, the UDA, who is our master planners, are the ones who came through. And after having numerous, numerous, numerous city holding public hearings and telling people about plans and showing people plans and going through those plans, they're the ones that we are leaning on and depending on to, to do our planning for, for what we're going to do here in, in the master part of the city. We've looked at it very strongly. We looked at both ways, and we considered both ways. But after coming through and looking at it, I have to agree with them that there is a reason. You have to have a reason to have this urban environment here, and you have to have something that brings people into this area, not only just into Big Spring Park East, but maybe over to where City Hall will be, maybe over to that parking area, and maybe even over to Constitution Hall Village area. So, all that kind of fits together as we look at the development of what we're going to be doing, doing through the master plan, which is the development of the master plan. Why did we pick the developers that we have? Because they are the ones who said, "We will follow the plan that UDA gave us, that the master planners gave you. We will follow that, and we will put this together. We think we can put this together very well." They're a reputable group. They have a good reputation throughout the Southeast and have done it time and time again. They have spent thousands and thousands of dollars to make sure that we come in with this and it looks right, that they can give us renderings that it's going to look like. And there's still another bite at this apple. When the development agreement comes before council, that will be the other bite at the apple. So, we want to tell you that, you know, we, we, we did listen to you. We did have numerous public hearings, and had numerous public hearings as we went through the big picture, as we went through the downtown planning and the planning system. And we will continue to listen as we go through that. But at this point, we are in a, a, we're, we are working with the developers, but we are working on a development agreement that will come before this council and will be voted on by this council.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Ms. Reed?
Good evening. I don't know where he was when the master plan was being presented so many times. What we need to do, I want to thank you for laying public input, and I do have a rattlesnake jacket on tonight, so look out. When the rattlesnake starts crawling, that'd be you all sneaking downtown and doing things not brought before the public. You and the school board, I had. I'm still wearing these rattlesnake jackets. Anyway, I just left the school board a few minutes ago about a budget. It seems like to me that they may be in some trouble coming up with all these new buildings and everything that's going on. I see you refinancing their bonds for them. And is it true that we borrowed some money when we refinanced some of their bonds? And if you, if we did, I'd like for you to tell the public, somebody told me a rumor that when you refinanced their bonds, city borrowed some money. I don't know right now. Now, I'm not answering for that right now, but we don't know too much about the budget anymore. We didn't have a six-month review this year. It's the first time in 30 years that I never knew that we didn't have a six-month budget. Things is getting bad at City Hall. We're changing too many things, as far as I'm concerned. No work sessions, no budget hearings, and anyway, I've got a lot to talk about. We didn't, we did have a meeting the other night, and the master plan for John Hunt Park was not presented. And, and I believe that we hired a person, $12,500, when that golf course came up for, to give away, get rid of it, that's what you did. I thought we paid $12,500 for somebody to tell us what to do with the John Hunt Park. But, but we hadn't decided, seen yet what to do with that. I want to thank the zoning and the variance board the other night. I went to a meeting there, and there was a proposal on the agenda about a nine-story condo built right down here by the Methodist Church where I go. And they didn't say anything, and they let it go. And I was told they were going to, he could build a four-story, a big developer, and he was promised a nine-story parking garage. And a rumor came to me that the city owned a parking garage behind the building that he's wanting to build. The city was going to give him the land and buy the parking garage. Now, Mayor, I stood up and spoke for you. I said the mayor is not going to give him that land and build that parking garage for that developer. So if I'm out of, out of character, you better tell me. Because I'm standing there, and when you do, I want that accounted for to the public with this, if you do that for that developer, like we did over here across the street from Federal Courthouse. I mean, I up and said something, and then it's going to stop the church bells. Golly, because of a condo. Anyway, the thing was never voted on. It went down. Steve Hiddinger was here. He was the first one to stand up and speak.
Ms. Reed, I'm sorry, we're having some issues. Your time is up.
My time is up? Bill Kling's not here to give me no time?
Thank, thanks. Thank you for your comments.
Where is Bill Kling, anyway?
He's not with us tonight. He had some family matters to take care of.
I'll be back up at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Sargent, uh, some questions were asked regarding the bu, the budget. I think we indicated tonight we're having budget hearings, um, work sessions, and then another budget hearing on the fourteenth, the eighteenth, and the twenty-eighth. Ms. Reed, we hope you join us for those. And then a question was also asked regarding, uh, the school system debt. Did we acquire additional debt for the school system?
No, during this refunding, there was no additional debt acquired during the process. It was a pure refunding. We refunded approximately eight and a half percent of the prior debt, if I remember. I didn't bring my papers in here. It was two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and thirteen debt that was refunded. It reduced our payment and our principal pay, our payment and our interest, our principal and our interest amounts from two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and thirty-two and two thousand and thirty-three, respectively.
Thank you very much.
And it lowered that amount by how much? Was it six million all total?
By just over five and a half million total, with approximately three point nine belonging to the school's debt and the remainder belonging to the city's. And the city is-
And that's money saved.
Money saved. And we are the stewards of the school's debt, so we are the ones that are obligated to do any refunding necessary for their obligations.
Thank you. Uh, the next person to sign up is Mr. Tom Devonish. Subject is Fountain Circle. Mr. Devonish, welcome.
Hi, Tom Devonish, twenty-eight oh seven Castle Pine Circle. I'd like to come, I came down to this, to, uh, bring up some points, questions regarding the new Fountain Square Circle. Um, I've looked and I haven't been able to find, uh, an RFP, an IFB, any kind of published requirement where we went out for either the five-year plan that was given but to UDA or the new City Hall quote iconic building. And so I'd like to know, I'm just going to read the questions that I have. Um, there was no disclosure of the architect involved in the City Hall design, who is the architectural firm. There's no disclosure of the architect involved in the iconic building design, who is the firm. There's no discussion of the UDA final design. It's suddenly become, become the gospel. There's no one from UDA, UDA that lives here in Huntsville. So we're accepting the gospel from somebody in Pittsburgh. Um, the city of Huntsville is going to use UDA's five-year plan as an avenue slash excuse to give away the downtown Huntsville property. The property that we're standing on right now is the absolute prime property in Huntsville. And we're going to give the, a developer that was, no one had any selection in, uh, the opportunity to lease, buy this property. Um, where is the letter of intent that was promised July the twenty-seventh? That letter of intent was going to go to Triad Properties, Crunkleton and Associates. Um, the general public has a right to read that LOI before Mayor Battle signs it. Um, I would like to see a copy of the LOI tomorrow, whether it's a draft stage or, or finished. Um, a final design iconic building is an idea. It was discussed in the, the, the City Council meeting. We should be able to know who and what the architects are designing. We will have to live with this building for the next fifty years. The property will be gone because it will become the property of Triad. Is the iconic building design a streetscape rendering that some young architect, that Rob Robinson at UDA told to have a design by the end of the week? Um, all streetcape, all street, streetscape drawings that were provided by UDA are signed C, uh, C Sun T, um, the same person. You know, why are we discussing-
Mr. Devonish, your time is up.
Okay, I just got a few more minutes. I need a few-
Sorry, Mr. Devonish, you have three minutes. Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for sharing your comments.
I'll, I'll send you all these email, all these questions tomorrow.
That would be helpful. Thank you very much.
But I think this should be brought up, this whole project could, should be brought up to some national architectural firms to have a competition.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Devonish. Um, Mayor Battle, would you like to address the difference between the master plan and, and final building designs and-
Yeah, and, and let me say, we have a letter of intent. A letter of intent is not a binding contract at all. And it says that it's not a binding contract. It sets, sets out the initial, uh, the initial wants, needs, and how we design and what we actually do as we do our design. Uh, it sets out the square footage, those, um, the floors and everything else. The council authorized the mayor go into a letter of intent. Letter of intents are usually followed by development agreements. Development agreements give you that final, um, give you that final design. Part of that development agreement is to, that they will bring in a, um, a scale model to look at, something that can be scaled to make sure that we don't overpower the park or underpower the park, uh, that we will have a scale model that comes in, and also we will have renderings, and renderings will tell us what this will look like as it is built and what it will look like, uh, in context to, to the city parks and to the city buildings that are around it. Uh, it will also tie in portions of what City Hall has, because City Hall needs to tie into that also, so that we can have a continuity of process as we come through, so that we have buildings that have some continuity from one building to the other building to the other building. Uh, letters of intent are just designed as such, to give you letters of intent, the intent of where we are going with that. If you would like to have a copy, be more than glad to give you a copy of that. Uh, please come by tomorrow and we, we will have it downstairs. But letter of intents are just that. From there, we go to development agreements. Development agreements are what the, are the binding agreements, and those will come and be rolled out to council. We will have, uh, we will have presentations on those, so that people will understand what is actually being done. That is the important thing. We started back on this process over a year ago, how to redesign the city and how to redesign the downtown. Now we are finally coming down to some actual actionable items in this. And as we've done this, we have done this in such a way that we want to be as transparent as possible. And we have had numerous, numerous public hearings, so that people can listen and understand what's going on and can have their talks and can also come back with things. I'm sorry you didn't hear about it, Mr. Devonish, but, uh, we did have those. And we have those on numerous times.
Mr. Devonish, your, your time for comments is over.
And as we have moved through these, we have done it in such a way that we want to make sure that it is an open, transparent process. We have done that numerous times. We started back six months ago, as we came through. Two months ago, when we started talking about the letter of intent and we showed, uh, showed the renderings of what it will look like. The reason to go to a letter of intent is so that they will spend the money on the modeling, and so that they will spend the money on actually giving us the final renderings and the architecture about what they plan on doing at that time. Then we can make a decision. Do we go forward or don't we? That is the council's decision at that point. And once they do that, then we move forward with building. But until we get to the development agreement point, there are no set, uh, parameters of this project. There is nothing there. Nothing is, uh, in contract that makes us move forward. So I do want to let you know, we have worked from the very first to make sure that this is an open and transparent process, and we have worked for over eight months to make sure it was an open, transparent process. And I'm sorry if you missed that portion of it, but it has been done. Uh, and I have been to many, many meetings on this, just so that we could make sure that it was open and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. That concludes our communications from the public. We will move on to item number eight, Huntsville Utility Items. We have no items from Huntsville Utilities. Nine, uh, item nine, Board Appointments. We have one board appointment to be voted on. Nine A one is a resolution reappointing Philip W. Bentley, Jr. to the Healthcare Authority of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, nominated at the August tenth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any nominations to be presented at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to item ten, Approval of Expenditures and the Finance Committee Report. The Chair of Finance Committee, Mr. Kling, is not here. Um, so, Mr. Uh, Mr. Keith, uh, we will leave it to you to, uh, move for the resolution authorizing expenditures for payment.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for the payment of expenditures in the amount of seven million, sixty-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Second by the Chair. Any questions for Mr. Keith, or Ms. Sargent, for that matter? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Keith, do you have any matters to bring to the council from the Finance Committee?
No, ma'am.
We will move on to item eleven, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I may have used my three minutes already. Um, I want to remind everybody that there's music under the lights, which is happening now at UG White's Paints and Pixels in front of Paints and Pixels until eight. Uh, Green Street Market is open until eight, which gives you another thirty-nine minutes to get to Green Street Market. Movie in the Park is tomorrow at Big Spring Park at six o'clock. And we kicked off last night at the Botanical Gardens. Uh, Paul Stigerwalt was nice enough to let us come to Botanical Gardens and bring all of our pets in, and we had the Hundred Mile Hundred Day Walking Challenge kickoff, which started yesterday. And the next walk is scheduled for Tuesday, September twelfth, at Hudson Alpha Institute at twelve fifteen. And I can tell you, the weather's changed a little bit, so it'll be much nicer. It's a good time to go out and walk and a good time to, uh, to, to get out. Last night, we had, um, Take Your Pet to Walk, and we had numerous people out there, probably had sixty, seventy people out, uh, many with pets, many without. And if anybody didn't have a pet, they could pick one up from Animal Services and take them home with them last night, so, uh, so they had a pet. Um, also, um, September second, uh, UAB plays their first game of football since their team has been reestablished, and they play the Bulldogs of Alabama A&amp;M, uh, in Birmingham. Ought to be a great game. We hope to see a lot of the people from Huntsville there and, uh, hope it is a great event. And, uh, to all, uh, uh, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. This brings us to communications from council. We will begin with Councilman Devon Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to make one, again, uh, statement that we will be having a redevelopment introduction for the Johnson Property, uh, that's off of Winchester. That will be Tuesday at six PM. And again, I cannot thank, uh, administrative staff, Colonel Hamilton, Ms. Jordan, Shane, uh, Dennis, and everybody who has helped me, um, start this conversation. It will be what I believe a very unique meeting, um, but I will wear my hard hat, and I'm excited, um, for the opportunity to sort of make an introduction that I think will be unique to North Huntsville. And again, thank you, everybody who has sort of made this possible.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Mr. Russell.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, it's football season, and tonight Huntsville High, uh, kicked off at seven against Hazel Green. Uh, their first chamberry game of the season, and I was hoping to attend, so again, if we could, uh, keep the speeches down, it'd be great. And, uh, the rest of the local teams are starting to play, uh, Friday, and we need to show that we care about our schools, and it's a great way to build community, so I encourage everyone to attend their games. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Russell, Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. I will hold my dissertation short there, Mr. Russell. Um, actually, we're having a special, uh, town hall meeting on September the twelfth at six o'clock. And this special meeting is for the purpose of discussing, uh, a company that's coming in to potentially develop a senior citizen property. This town hall will be at Hope Church off of Balch Road on Tuesday, September the twelfth at six o'clock, and will be through by seven thirty. Uh, Mayor, we probably only need just limited, uh, staff. Mr. Hamilton, uh, we'll communicate that to you, sir. Uh, probably just police, um, as a protocol, and, um, Ms. Jordan from planning and her staff. So, thank you all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Um, I want to thank the council, Mr. Riley and Mr. Thomas, for their efforts, uh, to interview the, to carry out the process for appointing, uh, municipal judges. The process that we approved a month or so ago worked very well. Um, it required a lot of commitment and a lot of time from council members and Mr. Riley, Mr. Thomas, and it was a, it was a good process. We had nine great candidates, and we look forward to concluding that process again on Monday, uh, the twenty-eighth at three o'clock, when we will, um, nominate and, and appoint those two judges. Also want to, uh, remind everybody, we've mentioned this before, that we have a town hall meeting on August twenty-eighth. I frequently at these town hall meetings, I will, um, invite department head, um, department heads to come and talk about issues that are of concern or interest to the community. This time, we're going to be inviting the new superintendent, Dr. Matt Aiken, to come, and he's going to be coming to the new Grissom High School, so we're going to change venues a little bit. So if anyone would like to meet the new superintendent and also take a tour of Grissom, at five o'clock, we will have student ambassadors there who will take people on tours of the new school, uh, followed at six o'clock then by, uh, Dr. Aiken. An opportunity to meet him and to, uh, to, to ask questions and learn more about the school system. And finally, we are working on setting up some public meetings regarding the new Hazland Road. There have been a lot of questions about the design, and, and there is a lot of excitement, a lot of positive feedback about connectivity potentially that that road will give for the neighborhood and, uh, connectivity to the arsenal, connectivity to, uh, the new park that's going to go in across from Grissom, connectivity, Grissom itself, and the new commercial developments that will be taking place in that area. So we want the neighborhoods to know what that's going to look like and what opportunities are there for them, and also get their feedback on it, and that, that will be announced at a later date, but we're working on putting that together. That concludes communications from the council. We move on to item thirteen, Unfinished Business Items for Action. Item thirteen A is an ordinance number seventeen dash five nine six, annexing zero point eight six acres of land lying east of Highway four thirty-one South and on the east side of Wade Road. This was introduced at the August tenth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Culver. Ms. Nichols.
This annexation request is approximately point eight six acres. This property is located on the east side of Highway four thirty-one South and on the east side of Wade Road. The property owner of this property would like to annex in this, uh, small portion. He owns the property south of this area that you guys see hatched in the, or excuse me, shaded in the red, which is already in the city, city limits. He would like to eventually combine both parcels into one lot and would like to develop, um, a future medical office on this particular property.
Any questions for Ms. Nichol or discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen B is an ordinance number seventeen dash five nine seven, approving the naming of an unnamed street to be known as Joe's Place. This was introduced in the August tenth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting. Motion by the Chair?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. I cannot wait to hear about this, Ms. Nichols.
So this street is currently unnamed. Um, this property was originally platted with the subdivision back in nineteen forty-two, um, when the developer laid out the initial lots. This particular property, um, just remained as is. It was never named, and it never had any homes that basically abut it, or excuse me, faced this unnamed street. So we received a request from a, um, very eager citizen that would like to have this street named Joe's Place, um, in honor of a friend who is named Joe.
Any friend like that? Where is this located?
This is near the Mayfair area. This is Thornton Circle. If I can find my cursor here.
So this is not going to impact any, there's no one living there?
No.
It's not going to impact anybody in terms of having to have addresses changed?
Correct. There were no homes, um, affected by this property. This was just a, uh, mere observation by a citizen that this, uh, road in their neighborhood was unnamed, and she thought it was very fitting for Joe to have his name on, uh, this unnamed street.
For the man who has everything.
Yes.
Um, any questions or co, other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thirteen C is ordinance number seventeen dash five nine eight, approving the following street name change, Chase Farm Boulevard to One Aviation Way. This was introduced August tenth, twenty seventeen, at the regular council meeting. Motion from Mr. Culver, second by the Chair. Motion from Mr. Culver, second by the Chair. Ms. Nichols?
This is just a name change request for a street name that is currently listed as Chase Farm Boulevard. The property owner has requested that this property be changed from Chase Farm Boulevard to Aviation Way, and this item was recommended by Planning Commission.
Questions or comments? Anyone who will be impacted by this change?
I don't believe there is anyone that has a physical address on Chase Farm at this time.
Councilman Robinson, this is the road leading to the new GE Aviation Plant off of Green Road.
Thank you. Okay, so this is GE Aviation's new home and appropriately named?
Yes, ma'am.
Aviation Way. One Aviation Way. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen D is ordinance number seventeen dash five-nine-nine, condemning property and authorizing disposal, trade, sale, or destruction of surplus property. This was introduced at the August tenth, twenty-seventeen, regular council meeting.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Russell. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen E is ordinance number seventeen dash six-zero-zero, declaring property located at twenty-four forty-six Shepherd Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-one-zero, surplus. This was introduced at the August tenth, twenty-seventeen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Dr. Robinson. This lot is next to the Meadow Hills Initiative Office that's in Meadow Hills. The Neighborhood Association is maintaining the property and will use it for neighborhood activities. The long-term plans for this property are a park for the neighborhood, so we ask for your consideration tonight.
Any questions for Ms. Jordan? Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen F is an ordinance number seventeen dash six-zero-one, amending Article Three Storage and Collection of Chapter Twenty-two, solid waste of the Code of Ordinances. This was introduced at the August tenth, twenty-seventeen, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Keith. Any questions?
Yes, I'd like an explanation, please.
Is there someone here from Public Works, or Mr. Hamilton, would you like to handle this?
Yeah, well, Chris is making his way in here. Essentially, this is intended to clarify items or, you know, materials that are not allowed to be put into your green, your bin. The ordinance right now does not allow you to put dirt in your bin, but the way it's written, it's easily interpreted to imply that only means construction-related dirt. The intent is that any sort of dirt cannot be used to fill up your green bin, and so this amendment would clarify that to make it clear that you cannot fill your bin with dirt and have Public Works haul it away for you.
Is it rocks also, Mr. McNeese?
Yes, sir. It is what we've had, we're kind of past the period now where we've had some residents in the front of the summer. They'll, we have had our current ordinance, the way it stood before the improvements were made, before this modification was made, that they prohibited construction material and construction dirt, two-by-fours, that kind of thing. But when we would go empty some of the carts, it would have potting soil, a lot of topsoil from around the house, mulch that was removed from beds, and it was straining our guys to have to pick up those thirty-two gallon cans that was filled with this dirt material. And so, we modified the ordinance, obviously, to account for those materials as well. And what they do when they get into our compactors, into the trucks, they will obviously fall to the bottom, and they'll restrict the amount of garbage that can be collected and compacted, because it's being compacted on the bottom part of that, of the truck. So, we're kind of wasting a lot of voided space up top with our hauling back and forth. So, it kind of hinders our ability to collect. So, we kind of want to restrict that material, leave it up to the homeowner to find a way of disposing of that material without it going through our collection procedures.
Questions?
How do you let people know that that change is happening?
We have cards that we give out whenever we go correct the action that some people are doing. We'll verbally knock on their doors. We'll tell them whenever we see that activity going on, and we'll kind of transition into that, let them know, okay, we'll let it slide this time, we'll take it, or we'll do something, make some kind of arrangement, but next time, let's not, you know, let's not repeat this action again. So, we'll slowly do it by word of mouth at first, and we're coming up with some videos, informative videos that we're going to put on the web, and that's one of the topics we're going to discuss, hopefully educate the public so we won't have this action next summer.
Would it be appropriate to dispose of potting soil with other yard waste, or is this like absolutely not?
Well, they can put, the yard waste that we have, is like your limbs, your cleanup around the house, your landscape, landscape numbers, that kind of thing. They can, they can put it out there. We kind of want to restrict that too, to a point, whenever you throw pots out there, obviously, if a couple of them are in there, we don't really, doesn't really bleep on the radar, but if you get large piles of dirt where someone's doing a large landscaping project where they got in there with, they rent a Bobcat, and they're in there, you know, kind of scooping up the first four, six inches of organic material, and they're piling it up at the road, that's what we really try to restrict with this.
And if I could add, one of the things that we would not want to do is fill our landfill with dirt. We want to fill the landfill with waste and then cap it off with dirt. And so, if people are sending a lot of dirt to the landfill, we dug the dirt out in order to create the landfill, we don't want to fill it back up with dirt. And this is not a widespread problem. There are, you know, a few citizens that have struggled with this issue, and Sanitation Department has been working with them for a while, and this just helps clarify exactly what the intent is. Green Team also does a good bit of training and things out, helping people understand better how to recycle their yard waste, and potting soil is certainly something that's easily recycled back into the beds and things around your yard. This is not something that should be a significant issue for our citizens.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, new business items for introduction. These items for introduction only and will be considered at the September fourteenth meeting. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance annexing fifteen point four-eight acres of land lying on the south side of Harbin Road and west of Nance Road. Fourteen B is introduction of an ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus equipment. Fifteen C is introduction of an ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus equipment to be sold to the Tennessee Valley Recycling. Moving on to item fifteen, new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items anyone wishes to hold for separate consideration?
Madam President, I wish to hold fifteen A G, fifteen A G.
The Chair wishes to hold fifteen A E. Are there any other items to be held?
Madam President, could you please hold fifteen A L?
If I can find them. A E, A G, A L. Any others? We will proceed, so we can get Mr. Russell out after football games. Fifteen A, resolution authorizing the Mayor to execute an adjustment to the original agreement between the North Alabama Highway Safety Officers and the City of Huntsville, Alabama for an additional eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars in project funds. Fifteen B has been deleted. Fifteen C, resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a business associate agreement between the City of Huntsville and Health Cost and Risk Management LLC for the purpose of analyzing claims data in partnership with CareHere and Springbook. Fifteen D, resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and John C. Calhoun State Community College for the facilitation of emergency medical technician program training. Fifteen E is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to accept the twenty-seventeen EMPG grant from the Alabama Emergency Management Agency. Fifteen F is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to accept a grant from the American Society of Prevention of Cruelty to Animals in the amount of five thousand dollars. Fifteen G is a resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to invoke a Southern Community Bank Letter of Credit number one zero 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 three eight six seven one for Braywick Three at McMullen Cove Subdivision. Fifteen H is a resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to invoke Bank Corp. South Bank Letter of Credit number three six two zero 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 eight nine zero two five five for Silo Hill Phase Two at McMullen Cove Subdivision. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to invoke Bank Independent Letter of Credit number two zero eight nine four seven zero nine for Strafford Phase Two at McMullen Cove Subdivision. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing City Attorney to settle the claim of Southside Christian Church, claim number FY seventeen dash five-eight. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the City Attorney to settle the claim of Janice Ray, claim number FY seventeen one zero six. Fifteen L is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to execute change order number one and final between the City of Huntsville and Dunn Building Company LLC for concrete installation for the HPD firing range at three twenty-five Waltry Anna Highway. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to execute change order number one and final between the City of Huntsville and Premier Structure, Inc. for construction services. For the Hayes Nature Preserve restroom facility at seventy-one fifty-three Highway four thirty-one South. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to execute change order number one and final between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Fence Company for construction services for HPD firing range fence at three twenty-five Waltry Anna Highway. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for EUL multi-use path and parking area, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash S P forty, and Aldot project numbers T A P H V dash T A one four nine five three and T A P H V dash T A sixteen nine four eight. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for acquisition services for Martin Road additional lanes for Larissy Drive to Zert Road, state project number P L H dash eight five one two six oh three and city project number six five dash ten dash R D zero six. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a non-reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and Xfinity for relocation of existing utility facilities on public right-of-way work associated with Aldot project number A C A A six zero one six zero F, Atrip zero twelve, additional lanes, C R eleven Martin Road from old Jim Williams Road to C R seven, Zert Road, project number sixty-five dash ten dash R D zero seven. Fifteen R is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a non-reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and WOW for relocation of existing utility facilities on public right-of-way associated with Aldot project number A C A A six zero one six zero F, Atrip zero twelve, additional lanes, C R eleven Martin Road from old Jim Williams Road to C R seven, Zert Road, project number six five dash ten dash R D zero seven. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and OMI, Inc. for construction testing services for Copper Run Branch, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash S P four one. Fifteen T is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a non-reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Utilities for relocation of existing utility facilities on public right-of-way associated with Aldot project number A C A A six zero one six zero F, Atrip zero twelve, additional lanes, C R eleven Martin Road from old Jim Williams Road to C R seven Zert Road, project number sixty-five dash ten dash R D zero seven. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a non-reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and Sentrylink for relocation of existing utility facilities on public right-of-way associated with Aldot project number A C A A six zero one six zero F, Atrip zero twelve, additional lanes, C R eleven Martin Road from old Jim Williams Road to C R seven Zert Road, project number six five dash ten dash R D zero seven. Fifteen V is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a non-reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and AT&T Alabama for relocation of existing utility facilities on public right-of-way associated with Aldot project number A C A A six zero one six zero F, Atrip zero twelve, additional lanes, C R eleven Martin Road from old Jim Williams Road to C R seven Zert Road, project number six five dash ten dash R D zero seven. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville and Geo Solutions LLC for geotechnical consulting services near North Huntsville Industrial Park for proposed industry, project number seven one dash seventeen dash S P four four. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville and S N M E, Inc. for engineering surveying services near North Huntsville Industrial Park, project number seven one dash seventeen dash S P four four. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Arcadis U.S., Inc. for engineering design services for Dallas Branch Print Creek Phase One, project number six five dash thirteen dash D R zero three. Fifteen Z is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidders, meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptances. Fifteen double A is a resolution authorizing travel expenses. Fifteen B is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six-five-nine by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. Fifteen A C is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. Fifteen A D is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six-five-nine by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. We considered A F already. Fifteen A H, a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a court referral officer contact between the Administrative Director of Courts, Judicial Branch, State of Alabama, and the City of Huntsville Municipal Court. Fifteen A I is a request for authorization to advertise and fill four sanitation worker positions. Fifteen A J is a request for authorization to advertise and fill three secretary two positions. Fifteen A K is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one regular full-time special populations recreation supervisor position, grade fifteen, at a higher than minimum rate if necessary. Fifteen A M is a request for authorization to advertise and hire for the position of public safety dispatcher in order to bring manpower up to authorized strength. Fifteen A N is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one position of traffic engineer one, grade seventeen, at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. Fifteen A O is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of accreditation coordinator, grade fifteen. Fifteen A P is a request for authorization to advertise the position of payroll supervisor, grade seventeen, and to fill at a higher than minimum rate if necessary. That includes those items.
Madam President, I move for solidation approval of fifteen A, fifteen C through fifteen A D, fifteen A H through fifteen A K, fifteen A M through fifteen A P.
Second by the Chair. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to item fifteen A E. Fifteen A E is a resolution authorizing and approving the amended charter and amended bylaws combining the Coleman Area Mental Health Authority, Inc. and the Huntsville Madison County Mental Health Board, Inc. to create a comprehensive mental and behavioral health care system. Chair moves for approval? Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Hamilton, would you like to share with us what we've got going on here? And I believe we also have Mr. Jeremy Blair in the audience to answer questions.
Correct, and he is far more qualified to answer questions on it than I am, so I would recommend that we just go directly to him and have him explain exactly what's happening here.
Mr. Blair, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilpersons. This is basically, you know, since two thousand and nine, you know, when Department of Mental Health received about a forty million dollar cut, we were serving about seventy-three hundred clients at that time. Fast forward to last year, we served about ninety-three hundred clients, with, you know, obviously, our revenue has pretty much stayed stagnant in addition to that cut we received in oh nine. But as part of our core values as a company, we come to work with a can-do attitude, and so we have looked at ways to grow our revenue outside of relying on those sources. And at this point, one of the biggest ways to do that is to seek partnerships and mergers and acquisitions. And so, we have found a great partner in Coleman Mental Health Center and believe that this will be a benefit not only for Madison County residents, but also residents of Coleman County. And it will, you know, develop and bring a stronger company, all told, and everything will operate under Wellstone. I will remain the CEO of the combined entity. Their current Executive Director will join our organization as Chief Operating Officer, and we believe that this will really strengthen our delivery of care throughout those two communities.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. The questions for Mr. Blair?
How will the board structure work?
So, currently, the board structure is there's six appointees from the City Council and six appointees from the County Commission. That will remain intact, and then there will be three appointees from Coleman County and three appointees from Coleman City. Thank you.
And the Coleman Council and Coleman County Commission will make their appointments?
Correct.
And they, but they will meet together and govern as one body?
Correct. And I also want to point out that any local funding that is appointed by Huntsville City, Madison County, or Madison City will specifically stay in this area. There are, there's language in our merger agreement to that effect, and we also have the accounting ability to be able to make sure we track that and keep accountable to that. And the same is true for Coleman as well.
If this model works well, is the plan to perhaps bring in other counties to also benefit from the joint services?
I think across the nation in behavioral health, this is a trend, and we would certainly be open to those additional partnerships in the North Alabama area.
So, this is an effort to leverage shrinking resources?
Absolutely.
You know, I commend both Wellstone and Coleman Mental Health Services for being willing to explore this. We have way too many silos that where funding gets restricted, but you have, everybody has to let go a little to make this work, and in the process, everyone benefits. So, good for you for doing it. Other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen A G is a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a phased-in compliance agreement among the City of Huntsville, Mirabeau, gated community, and the villages at Lenox Square. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Are there questions or discussion? Are there questions or discussion?
Madam President, I have questions. Anytime we see Mirabeau, we should stop and ask questions. Please, somebody assure me this is okay?
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, Ms... Madam President, I might just mention upfront, this is, I agree with Councilman Russell. This is one that we keep asking, 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 and we keep trying to push off. But it is, you know, we have worked very hard to get to the place where hopefully, we are very close to seeing the last days. It will have to see it on the council agenda, we would hope. So would you like to explain where this one is, Ms. Jordan?
Maybe I'll chime in after our city attorney takes the first stab at it.
All right.
Mr. Riley?
All right. I'll take a little stab. As the mayor, of course, has indicated, this is an apartment complex, which was rehabilitation of which was a cooperative venture between HUD and the City of Huntsville. And as has been evidenced here, it has a long and storied history as far as that goes. Story which we don't necessarily want to repeat at all times. Anyway, the idea from the beginning has been to rehabilitate the complex. And much in that area has been accomplished. But over the last couple, three years, a number of code violations and things have been identified. And the current owner simply was not in a financial position to be able to address and accomplish the repairs and things that were needed. Fortunately, a buyer has been identified, is interested in taking on the complex. But obviously, a buyer would not want to walk into a situation where they were immediately beset by huge, immediate expenses and threats of code violations and such. Wishing to facilitate this change in ownership to an owner that would be able to operate this facility and make the repairs needed, the city has agreed to a phased-in compliance agreement with the new owner that will allow him to address the many violations and things that are present in an orderly fashion that's well set out in the agreement and that which will be monitoring and modified. It's also important to note that serious health and safety concerns will be addressed immediately under the process. And in fact, the new owner is already undergoing a lot of these things. So in facilitating this process, hopefully, we will move this complex on to the end goal, which is to have a good financially responsible owner in charge of a fine facility that will increase the rental options available to people in that area.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, is there anything you would like to add? They did it for you.
He did, he did great.
Yeah. And less layman vernacular, we want to sell it.
Want to fix it and sell it.
So my question is, is this costing the city any additional money than all the money we've already dumped into this place?
No, this is not involving any additional input of city funds or anything of that nature. It's just an agreement whereby we extend the time to allow necessary corrections and repairs to be made so that the new owner can do so in a fashion that doesn't put him under to begin with.
And does the city currently have any ownership interest in this gated community?
When we say ownership interest, I think we have some interest in connection with our federal funds that have been involved. And so that is engaged in the process. And it is fairly complicated. But the goal here is to get all of those strings untied and so that the city will be apart from this and it will be a fully self-operating complex there.
We want to sell it.
Yes. We want to sell it.
So for years and years, I voted no on anything about this project and felt really good about it. But this sounds like I need to vote yes on, so I'm going to vote yes?
Unless you would enjoy hearing about Mirabeau for longer.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We'll note that Mr. Russell voted aye. 15AL, request for authorization to advertise and hire for the position of police officer for the 58th session of the police academy in order to bring manpower up to authorized strength. Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Keith.
Colonel, just recently, and this is an education moment for me as well as I actually had a conversation with Ms. Reed about this. When you say in order to bring up manpower, how do we gauge it? Is it just budget? Why is it we can't get to our optimal number of police officers you believe we need?
So there's kind of, there's two different issues here at play. So first, in terms of the number of officers that were, the police department is authorized, that's determined during the budget process. The last two or three years, council has added some number of slots, additional authorizations. You know, I think last year it was four, I think the year before that it was seven. But it has added additional authorizations to grow the police force. And in fact, I fully expect that the budget that we recommend to you here next month will include some additional authorizations to continue to grow the police department. That is separate from what's before you tonight. So what's before you tonight is authorization for them to begin the hiring process. And as you know, for the police department and getting into the police academy is a multi-month process. What they will end up offering jobs to, hopefully, are sufficient cadets to fill any vacancies they have. So in this case, assuming that the council approves a budget that adds authorizations, obviously, as soon as you do that on one October, you immediately have vacancies. So any slots that you add on that date would be vacant at that point in time. Plus, you have people who have retired or departed for whatever reason. So throughout the year, some number of vacancies accumulate. What we typically do, if, for example, there's 20 vacancies, we'll actually offer jobs to a few more than that. And how many more is generally just kind of a judgment call on the part of the chief and the mayor based on the washout rate from the academy as well as anticipated new retirements that will occur while the academy's in session. So the goal is that when they graduate, you've brought the police force back to 100%. And we do a pretty good job of getting pretty close to that. They're probably constantly having people retire out of the police departments. That's why we're constantly running academies to keep them filled. So, you know, you're probably never exactly at 100%. I think you're realistically, if we're doing it the right way, you stay probably in the, you know, 95 to 98%. And that's really what the goal is.
So I guess, how do I answer that? When somebody says we need more police officers, I can agree with them. But say that the process is then itself is a little bit more complicated than just holding applicants. We'll always have openings because of retirement. But then we also have to fill that through a cadet class.
Yeah. So, you know, so when someone says we need more police officers, what they're saying is you need to add more authorizations. And then the administration will work to fill those vacancies. But you're right. If, for example, the budget you pass this year adds 10 police officers on one October, you now have 10 vacancies, you know, in addition to whatever vacancies you already had. Those 10 positions, those brand-new positions are vacant. They won't be filled until this academy class graduates next summer. So from start to finish on that process, you haven't really added police officers to the street for almost a year.
Thank you. Answers our questions, Ms. Reed.
Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. That brings, we have no legal department items or transactions. Brings us to item 17, non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Ms. Reed.
I just hope I didn't hear we're just going to hire 10 police officers in this budget. Please, don't even dare tell me that. Anyway, that one, when I come up here. But I want to see the budget and a copy of it. I want to be given that. If I have to buy it, I will because I don't know what you all are doing with our money. You don't have, you don't let the employees come in anymore? And I hear some of them don't have the equipment they need to do their jobs. Some of them needs more employees to do their jobs. I could tell you all a whole lot more than you know about City Hall, probably. But anyway, that's not what I'm up here for. I heard our budget is tight from a city employee. I said, of course it's tight. It's always tight when it comes to city employees. We need to stop and take a look at what they need and give them a raise and help these employees. We do. Some of them don't have what they need to do their job. I said, of course it's going to be tight. They say that every time. But we give all this property away. Somebody comes in here and wants a piece of land and wants something, we give it to them. And we get a little lease with no whole lot of money. Of course, we can't give them nothing because we're not taking in anything. We're giving this city away. I'm still lobbying for this City Hall to be built, right back where it is, right here, between this property and that property. I'm still lobbying for that. I hope you all remember that and not take that parking garage away over there for the jurors to have to walk all the way down the street. And I got a real problem. I did call Governor Kay Ivey. And I went to the Department of Transportation about the bicycle sidewalks. It's bothering me. Trump will be next. But anyway, I'm trying to find out where the money's coming from for these bicycle sidewalks when our roads look like death traps. Go down Holmes Avenue. Go everywhere, go anywhere you want to. Because this is terrible that you're putting your money in bicycle paths. And they tell me it's a grant money and the committee in Montgomery's are making a decision. Of course they are. You go down there, you know some of them, you tell them what to do. But anyway, and we've been paving Jordan Lane. It's a nightmare. He's working at night, 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 1:00. Reed gets all the construction work, I know. So he can't do it in the daytime. He has to do it in the middle of the night. And go look at those white lines that's on Jordan Lane. I can't see them when the sun's shining. How are you going to see them when it's raining and the storm's coming up? And I called the mayor's office and they said it's the Department of Transportation. I guess you all don't work with the Department of Transportation, do you? You can't say the lines are not good or we need to mark them better or anything. Y'all don't have anything to do with them, do you? Anyway, I hope you do. I hate to be so mean to you all. I'd like to know about Pinhook Creek.
Ms. Reed, your time is up.
I can't keep up with you all. I'm going to wear this rattlesnake jacket again sometime. And please, give us more information as to what's on those agendas instead of me out trying to out-gas you, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Appreciate you being here.
And I do love you. It's tough love. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, will you have copies of the budget available for the public when we have our work session and presentation? Is that something we normally share?
I don't believe in the past we've printed off copies for all the public. It's hyperlinked on the website.
Okay, they would be available online. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? There's a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. So much fun.